I was muted. I was muted, thank you. Yes, we did, and I've, you got the meeting packet that I sent you today, right?
Um, I know, I just went ahead and finally found it on Friday at, um, on the city website, the public city website. I never got anything in my personal email from the city, my city email. I was not provided with any agenda packet.
Well, we'll look into that, because I got my, my usual one from Amy. It would copy Shannon, so, um, maybe your email just didn't want to say hi to Amy this past week.
No, she emailed me about other things. And typically, typically, we get our agenda packet on a week before. And, yeah, and I, I emailed her to ask her about it, and I'm never got a response. So, yeah.
The packets were emailed out Friday afternoon to your city, all city emails. And because they're with no land use application on it, we did end of Thursday, we have to have a week out ahead of time for review. There was just one discussion topic.
Mm-hmm.
Total of six pages, I think, in the packet, so, uh, the requirement for a week prior.
Okay. I was just curious, because I was just so surprised, and then when I didn't hear from you, I thought, gosh, maybe I'm just missing it. And I thought, maybe there was a problem on my end. You're muted again, Anthony?
I am?
No, I'm not.
Oh, now I'm not? Okay, well, I was just quietly celebrating the fact that we have achieved quorum. And that means we can't call our evening to order nothing like a happy Monday night. First thing on our agenda, of course, this is Carlton Planning Commission meeting today is March 21, 2022, just after 6:00 PM. Our first step is to approve the minutes from February 22nd, that is, 222, from 2022. Does anybody have any requested changes or modifications to our meeting minutes from last month? All horizontally shaking heads is a positive thing at this point, so we'll welcome a motion to approve the minutes from February 22nd, 2022.
I move to approve them minutes from February 22nd, 2022.
I see a second from Mr. Jim Bandy. Everybody raise their hand if you're in favor of approving. Looks at passes unanimously, thank you so much. Next, we have our citizen comments, there's nobody here with us at City Hall, but we do have a few people out there in Zoom land, if you'd like to, I see Robin's got her digital hand up. Robin, you're welcome to take yourself off mute and address us this evening. This is for citizen comments for items that are not on the agenda, as we only have a couple of small agenda items, we're very excited to hear from you.
Well, thank you, and, uh, thank you for giving me this little moment here to express some thoughts. I just wanted to share with the Planning Commission that this last week, we had a community discussion about changes that community members wanted to have. You know, see, happened in Carlton, and as part of the Envision Carlton project. And it was remarkable, all of the people, when, in talking about changes that they wanted to see, made comments regarding the safety of kids in Carlton, on the streets, bike paths. And it was unanimous, and I actually had two different meetings, one with a single person and then one with five other people. And all of them made that, uh, made that a point as something that they wanted to see. So, knowing that there's some questions about, um, whether a back bike path or bike lane is going to put on, be put on Seventh Street, I thought that might be helpful information, even though it's not a lot, it's our first meeting. And I, um, it did strike me that that, that desire was so strong in the community, in that little group.
I appreciate knowing that very much. We're starting, beginning of the comprehensive plan update. We're going to have a conversation this evening about bikes and pedestrian pathways. So I very much appreciate that, and encourage you to share with your communities, whether it's on your social network or, you know, among those attendees, to have everybody participate as much as possible, we're going to be having some meetings. Another one is in May of this year, followed by a summer of continued stakeholder invitations for comment and collaboration for part of the new comprehensive plan. So if you do have time, and you have the inclination, or anybody else who know, I, we really appreciate citizens' involvement, this is once every two decades, and we'd really, really value from you and your friends' contributions.
Thank you, it's exciting to be a part of it.
Yes, ma'am. All right, does anybody else out in Zoom land want to make any other further comments? Otherwise, we will move on to our first discussion item for the evening.
We just got into the lock.
Be a dachshund. All right, it's great to see both of you there, Mayor Watkins and Mayor Watkins' best friend. We will proceed on to our first element tonight, which is the bike and pedestrian discussion. We have the grateful, or we are grateful for the assistance and the perspective of city staff who's put together a little bit of a summary for us on exactly what we're looking at from a procedural perspective. Mr. Jenkins or Mr. Easley, who would like to take the dance floor first?
I think I can take this from now, so, um, I think at our, was it our January or February meeting, where, uh, the Planning Commission asked Nicholas and I to put together a, um, kind of a, just a quick memo summarizing, the process for preliminary plan approval, preliminary plan amendment. And then, most importantly, I think, was, was the interest in addressing the concerns with regards to bike lanes and what the options were, uh, going forward. So, uh, we took some of that information, uh, and we, and we put it in a memo. And I hope, I hope you've had the, the time to review it, and I apologize for, for not getting it to you until Friday. There are a few last things we're discussing on Thursday. Just making sure everything was clear within the memo. So again, apologies for, for the lateness on that, but I hope you've all had the opportunity to, to review it. And I'm really just, unless you want me to go through it step by step, I'm really just here to answer any questions and, um, you know, provide input if, if you have any questions about, about the process moving forward, or anything that you saw within the memo. But I'm also happy to, to go through it, uh, kind of as a step by step, if you'd like. But again, really just whatever, however you would like to proceed with this, I'm happy with.
And you know that Commissioner Terrell has had this as one of the feathers in her hat, if you will. So, Susie, was this sufficient from a, from a current standpoint as to how, what we're looking at right now? Or do you, or anybody else have any comments on, or, or questions for Mr. Jenkins at this time?
So, um, I definitely have comments, but I don't know if this is the appropriate time for my comments. I don't have any questions about what he wrote, I, I think it was made very clear at the last meeting, and I was really grateful for that clarity, that, um, we actually are not engaging with the developer in any way to remediate this. That if it, if it comes to remediation, which I hope it does, um, that it will be a remediation undertaken by the city. And, um, I mean, I do want to point out that it's non-conformant to the city plan. I mean, it's non-conformant to our comprehensive, existing comprehensive plan. And it's out of conformance to both our existing street standards and our new collector street standards. I mean, it needs, it does not fully meet any street standards, the Seventh Street. Um, one point of clarity is, I actually never was concerned as much with Phase Two. It was always Phase One, and even before I became a planning commissioner. That is when I began communicating with the city. So, um, I can go through sort of some of that background of my communications with the city. Um, I'm not, I mean, that would be very brief, but I don't know if this is the appropriate time to do that, or if we want to give other commissioners a chance to clarify their questions.
I'd give Commissioner Nord, Commissioner Bandy, the floor, if you'd have it, otherwise, you're welcome to proceed, Susie.
Okay.
They look like they're wrapped in attention for you.
Okay, well, so, um, I began asking about the bike lane striping on Seventh Street when our city manager was actually, was Dennis Durham. And I was a citizen at that time, I was not yet a planning commissioner. And I had attended the Phase One approval meetings. And the bike lanes were never a question of, they were never even discussed in Phase One. And, um, so I just assumed, as a citizen, that they would be put in because they are in the street standards for new collector streets. Um, I did, as the street was being built, the five-foot bike sidewalks were concerning, and the lack of planting strips were concerning. And so when Phase Two came into its approval meetings, I advocated very strongly for planting strips in Phase Two, which were subsequently added because of my advocacy. And I also advocated for a variety of street trees in Phase Two, which also seems to have been adopted. But Phase One has always been my biggest concern, because it connects directly to the back of the school field, the school playing field. So it becomes a street that could be a very critical connection as a safe route eventually, between Carlton Crest Community and, um, the residents of JR Meadows. And they could walk directly along that Phase One Seventh Street and go walk directly into the back of the playing school playing field. And in fact, um, because of my advocacy, there's, they're connecting trails from both subdivisions into the school. My, um, communication with the superintendent and with the city, and with the school board, when I was a citizen, resulted in them saying, yeah, we're going to put a gate in the backfield and have that be a connection. So, um, given that it's a ridiculously wide street, it's 46 feet wide. And, um, that, the only way to slow traffic on a wide, straight street like that would be to paint a straight, a bike lane. I mean, it's going to slow traffic, it's going to give people who have too narrow of a sidewalk to walk comfortably more than to a breast. Um, if you have a child on a cycle and a couple with a stroller, you're going to ride, you can't even walk as a family on a five-foot sidewalk. So the bike lanes become an extension of the pedestrian pathway. And they should be also a, a safe route for children and adults to safely access points in the city. And in the year 2022, when the whole nation is advocating for walkability and connectivity and pedestrian pathways, it would seem that the least we could do would be to conform to our existing comprehensive plan, which calls for two five-foot bike lanes. Um, on page 111 of our, um, of our transportation plan, it gives you a section, a street section, which shows exactly how to put all of those things, parking, bike lane, and sidewalks in that 46, well, not the sidewalks, they're, they're on the other side of the pavement. But the bike lanes and the parking all can be easily accommodated in that 46 feet of pavement. Um, I guess the many, 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 um, excuses I've heard for not putting bike lanes in, um, have been discouraging and frustrating. I would be, I would not be being honest if I didn't say that I find it frustrating. And I was very appreciative when I finally found out why there was objections to it, because I think the perception was that I wanted to have the developer do it. Which, I know, I always did, I never thought that that was going to be the remediation, because I know we can't go back on what was agreed to. But now I really would just like to really work collaboratively as a planning commission and as, and with the city council to, to fix it, right? Because that's what really needs to be done, it needs to be fixed. It's unsafe, it's hazardous, it's not welcoming, it doesn't encourage pedestrians. I mean, in our, what, Goal 12, the objective of Goal 12 is, I'm going to quote, um, "to develop a balanced multimodal transportation system." Well, our city has actively and intentionally created a street that meets none of those objectives. It simply isn't safe, and it simply isn't right. I have, um, sent the city documentation from the Institute of Transportation Engineers, their practice guide for designing urban thoroughfares, which recommends narrowing travel lanes to 10 feet and allowing bike lanes to be included. I've sent them information from ASHTO, which is the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials that advocate for bike lanes on lower speed urban streets with 10 to 11-foot travel lanes. I've sent them links to small town enrolled design guides by Alta Planning that also advocates for bike lanes on a street like South Seventh Street. At this point, I just feel like it is the time to start making plans for when our city adopts this street, that we begin making plans to fix the problem. And that's my summary. Thank you.
Well, we really appreciate that. Mr. Bandy, did you have a concurrence or a dissenting opinion you would like to register?
Uh, not dissenting at all. I am, uh, you know, totally, as I think most of you know, in agreement with Susie. And I, my, my question is, and, yeah, as I understood what I read today from you, Kyle, and staff put together, we do have the ability to make this right on Phase Two. Am I incorrect there?
So, I think, I think, and I, I think the point of, of the memo here was to outline the options going forward. And the city, the city has the ability, should it choose to do so at the city council level, to do whatever it would like with its public right of way within reason, essentially. I think what, what the discussion was, is Nick, neither Nicholas or I were around, or Shannon, quite frankly, were around when this decision was made. So we had to do a lot of backtracking to figure out exactly, you know, why this happened, what, what the thought process was, if there was a thought process, if the developer snuck it by the city the first time, if the city worked with the developer to maybe do something that wasn't consistent. That was kind of what we've been trying to do, and we still aren't 100% sure, but using kind of the, the past documentation we have, we think we've essentially discovered that, really what happened is that Seventh Street was kind of treated as a quote-unquote "existing street", which, which limits the required bike lanes, which, I, was not interpretation that really makes sense, and that was, isn't interpretation, I think, I would make now, certainly. But that's how it was, that seems to have been how it was treated. So, the focus, uh, now is, is we're in the final stages of, of Phase Two. Obviously, Phase One has been recorded and, and is, you know, currently, you know, there, you know, at the present time. So really, the, the, what, what we wanted to make clear from this, uh, from the memo and, and the discussion today was that the city, if, like Commissioner Terrell said, work with the city council on this, and if that's something that everyone wants to see, it's within the city's ability to go back and do that, it's just something that we're not going to go to the developer and say, you do this, because that's what was approved the first time. So as much as we'd like to do that, it's not a really, it's not a straightforward process. It's not something that, um, is, it's not really a can of worms that, that should be open, considering the city does have the ability to now go in, once the plat is recorded and the land is city right of way, and say, okay, this is what we want to see, this should have been, this should have happened in the first place. We can take these, you know, remediation factors and, and, and fix the problem that we see. It doesn't necessarily even need to be for just Phase One or just Phase Two, it's public right of way. So the city has the jurisdiction over that right of way. You know, whatever, you know, moves the city wants to take going forward with that, that would be approved by the city council and, and, you know, with input from, from citizens, with from Planning Commission. However, the city wants to go about that, that's the proper way to move forward now. And that was kind of the intent of, of giving you that information in the form that it was, so that, you know, we can kind of not look quite as much on the past, because it just doesn't really provide much of a benefit now, as much as we all wish it had, it had gone differently. To say, okay, we have this, this happened, it's unfortunate, now how do we fix it? And if that's the way the, the Planning Commission wants to fix it, I recommend, I would recommend bringing it to city council for, for that discussion and having that there.
Okay, so then, so as I understand it, then the, the Phase Two portion of Seventh Street has the same standard as was, at, at, at this time, as was in effect for Phase One's portion of the Seventh Street? In other words, it's all one street?
Right, that's, that's how it was considered, yes.
Okay, so, so we can't really change it even on the yet paved, uh, road or street?
If I could jump in on that, uh, the, if, for example, there comes like a JR Meadows Four that is further down on Seventh Street, in theory, at that stage, we, knowing what we know now, we would say it's a new collector road, and they would be held to these standards. The Phase Two street was held to the old existing collector street standard, which didn't involve bike lanes, and I believe it didn't even require, uh, landscape streets.
That's not true, that is, that is totally not true. It did require that, but the city council and the planning commission at that time ignored it. They, they, they treated it as though it was an existing street.
So, so, again, the, the, what we're, what the, what the issue was, is that the difference between how streets are considered, so say, there's a street in the TSP, but it's not yet improved. So, that's how it should have been treated, but it was not. It was treated as an existing street. So that was the problem, that we've, that, that's the problem, we believe, was the problem, at least, yes, go ahead.
Can I jump in? Yeah, so, um, actually, it was not held to any consistent street standard, because it was made 46-foot wide pavement, but the existing street standards were for 40-foot pavement. And then the parking strip in an existing street was supposed to be eight feet wide, it's been made 11 feet wide. And so actually, it does not conform to any of our street standards, to be honest. But, but like I said, it's water under the dam, but I just, I just so desperately want it to be fixed, because it just doesn't, it shouldn't be the way it is.
Okay, so, so, all right, I, I get it, I get where we're at now, that I think, and, and this is amongst us here, the planning commission personnel, that we need to meet with the city council and make clear what we want to happen. Because I think we are in total agreement, I have not, not seen one vote about any of this, or, or heard anyone's opinion say they're not in agreement with, with what you're saying, Susie.
Well, no, and Jim, it's super easy, because our, our city transportation system plan exactly lays out how the pavement should be, how 46-foot, it can be divided. So it's, it would be super easy just to say, okay, yeah, let's just do what our city transportation, transportation system plan says. So, also, in their, in their way to do that, that would be perfect.
Yeah, I mean, it was ignored before, and, and we have the ability to fix it without requiring the developer to do it. We can do it. And it's a matter of getting the city council to approve it, am I, am I right, guys? Is that?
You are correct, as, as far as timing goes, the city council can't act on this until the road has been dedicated to it. Essentially, until the city owns the street, it can't act on the street as though it owns it. So it could be some, like a month or some odd, uh, time before the city actually is dedicated this roadway. But after that stage, city council would have it within their rights to make dedications or decisions with this roadway.
Right, and then that, and that is how, and that relates directly to, um, what the Planning Commission approved back in February with the, with allowing the developer to record that final plat, so long as the, the set of, you know, criteria were met that we discussed. Because recording that final plat acts as, as dedicating that right of way to the city, which allows the city to have jurisdiction over that right of way. So, um, the, we're coming up, obviously, like, like Nicholas said, within that time period where they're going to start to be able to record the final plat. So, once that has happened, then the city has, has that right.
Does that happen before Phase Two is completely finished? They'll record Phase One plat?
So, um, the, the, the language with, with final plats is that the infrastructure and the improvements need to be installed to the satisfaction of the city engineer, or a guarantee needs to be recorded that, that guarantees those improvements will be, will be satisfied. So it's really, it, once they get to a point where, where the city engineer signs off and says, yes, either, you know, this has been completed to a satisfactory level, um, so include utilities, streets, all that, all that kind of stuff. All the, all the horizontal stuff, essentially. Then they can record that final plat, they have to record the restrictive covenant that, that we mentioned, Susan might, Kather's opinion. And then, uh, once that happens, they can record the final plat, and then they can get the building permits, and then the city will have that, that jurisdiction over, over the right of way, because it'd be dedicated as, as public right of way.
As, as far as the legal description goes, when you do a plat map, you're essentially creating additional legal lots of record. So it's taking one large piece of property and breaking it into many smaller pieces of property, because under Oregon law, you only have one house on each parcel, each piece of land. And so if you want to put a development in, you have to break a large piece of land into several smaller ones before you can start building additional houses. So the JR Meadows Two subdivision wouldn't be done in any way when the final plat is, is recorded. At that point, when it's recorded, this one large piece of property that they're considering doing things on becomes many smaller pieces that each one can then have a house built upon it.
Okay, so, I'm just trying to figure out exactly what timeline we're working with and what affect each of those time, uh, each of those developments. So in other words, when the city, the city will have control of, of Seventh Street before Phase Two is completed?
In, in terms of, if you're talking about homes being built, yes. If you're talking about, um, yes, so, yes. Before, before it's completely built out, if that's what you're asking, yes.
Yeah, so, so, I mean, because the final plat for Phase One will have been approved, or been accepted, and, um, and then it turns, the, the roadway turns into the property of the city, correct?
Though, yes, so Phase Two, once the plat is recorded, like Nicholas said, that means the lots are ready, they're ready to be sold or built upon or developed in whatever way, you know, it meets the, you know, the, the conditions that were laid out at our, at our last meeting that, that we had discussed before. So, yes, roughly speaking, I believe it's, it's when they record the plat, um, they'll, you know, there's the whole fiasco with the pump station and getting, making sure that was in line. They're allowed to get a, I believe it was 22 building permits, um, prior to that. And then once the pump station is, is complete, they can go ahead and finalize, um, the, the full development. But in terms, for, for the purposes of what we're discussing today, once the final plat is reported, that's when the city has, uh, jurisdiction over the public right of way, and that's when the, the legal lots are, are, are plotted.
Okay, so, I'm going to make a motion, and, and that motion is that staff inform us when that final plat is approved, and when the city council would welcome us to come and state our desires about Seventh Street, essentially. And, and, Susie, you agree with what I've just said?
No, I, I totally second, that was, you were reading my mind, I second that motion, yeah.
I mean, that, that, and that is, I mean, I probably didn't word it all perfectly, but that is the essence of what I think we all want, um, so.
And, yeah, and, and it's, it feels, um, reassuring that we finally have, um, a city planner who seems to understand that the issues, and seems to be an advocate for multimodal transportation in some ways, or at least for, um, adhering to our comprehensive plan. And I think that's what we didn't have before, and I think, I think that's where the problem came in. So, I know that you can't advocate one way or the other, but you understand the issues, and you understand that that's an important thing, and that most city planners across the nation would be supportive of multimodal transportation on a city street.
What I will say is that we will have, without going into too much detail, there will be more development coming in the next year, most likely, and, and.
No doubt about that.
That'll be, there's, there's been discussions about how those, those type developments will look and, and, and some initial discussions around those. So we're, we're certainly, you know, working, working with those, and, and, and really, the, the main thing is keeping, making sure the code is applied properly. So that's just, that's, you know, I, I need to do that, because it's the right thing to do, but also because it's my job. So, you know, it's important for both of us.
Right, that's right, but, yeah. And I appreciate that, because that was not clear. And as you can see from how Seventh Street was created, it has nothing to do with complete streets. And our existing city plan, comprehensive plan, in terms of multimodal transportation on collector streets, I mean, the streets are too wide, but it does, it did have a lot of things right. And the things that were right were largely ignored, and the things that were bad, like the crazy wide streets, were, um, joyfully embraced, and I'm not sure why that happened. And I, it's reassuring to know that you understand these issues, Kyle, thank you.
I am not sure, because I know the motion has been made and seconded, but I did have a comment.
Please do.
I'm, and, and I'm fine with the motion, I just, I was wondering, I mean, given that, um, basic, like, I just, I think there's more to this than Seventh Street, I know it came up about. Like, I just, I think there's more to this than Seventh Street. I know it came up about Seventh Street because Seventh Street was, like, those. Particular, um, we, we happen to be as a planning commission discussing J R Meadows, one and two for various things. But I think given that the, that what planning commission is advocating for are bike lanes on appropriate streets. And that we are to the phase where we're not asking the developer to do it, but we're asking the city to do it. I'm wondering if we want a little bit broader discussion rather than just Seventh Street. Are there other streets we want to be thinking about, like, at what point they may be able to be brought into compliance with those? Do we want to, do we want as planning commission to have a little bit broader of a discussion? Given that what we're asking, what we're going to be asking of the city is to take on the making of bike lanes.
So what, what I will say to that is, is, is not that that's not a good idea, but I think one of the things with, with. Streets, especially in small cities, that, that the city runs into issues with is that. Um, when obviously these new modern developments come in and they make these excessively wide streets and do all this stuff. They may be too wide, but they do have the room. They are improved. They have the option of doing that kind of stuff. A lot of the problems with the existing streets in Carlton. Um, is that they're not to that standard whatsoever and the city doesn't have a lot of money to. Go ahead and, and do all those improvements. So while it's a related discussion, it's also a little bit of a, a kind of a larger. You know, discussion with regards to making sure that, that all those. You know, improvement plans are, are aligned and, and in accordance with each other, as well as what the, what the code requirements are for new development. Versus existing development and, and those, those kind of elements. So I guess there's the, the public improvement plans and there's development triggered. Requirements and those are related, but, but separate, I suppose. So.
Yeah.
Bad idea to have that discussion, but just making sure that that's, that's the, the.
Right, I to, I totally understand that. I don't think I'm sort of saying like, these are all the streets we need the city to do. I think, but I think it would be, like, I think it would be nice to sort of understand what is doable, what isn't doable yet. But ought to be a priority when it can be done, right? I mean, it seems like that's what planning is.
In the city's T S P, there is a description of streets that are existing collectors versus new collector streets. And in theory, all of the new collector streets, the ones that are held to a new collector street standard. Uh, and then anything that's built from that point onwards is subsequently all, that's a collector street would be a new collector street by definition. So if you kind of, it, it doesn't help all that much, uh, without having the document up, kind of name out the streets that are new collector streets. But if you look in the T S P, uh, somewhere in a round page one hundred somewhere. Uh, it describes, which one?
One hundred and eleven is the sections for, for streets. I can actually have it, I can, if you, if I share my screen, I can show it to you.
I, I guess if we're talking about Seventh Street, right, are we talking about just South Seventh Street? Are we talking about South and North Seventh Street? Right, because, I mean, I know we've, I mean, again, I'm just, I'm trying to wonder, I'm just trying to think about whether. You know, like, are there streets that exist that we think of as sort of part of this same thing, right? North Seventh Street is also really wide, doesn't it?
No, it's, well, because it was a historical precedent for the way they built South Seventh Street. Which was, I don't know. I mean, I don't know why you would perpetuate poor planning and non.
But I just, I guess I just, I sort of feel like if we're, if it's post-developer and we're sort of saying. That this is a good thing for our city and it's irrelevant to what was done, but this is a good thing for the city and these things can exist. I, 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 I'm just wondering if we want to expand it a little bit. Yeah, I'm not, I mean, I know we can't do much on Third Street because that's. But, um, I guess I just sort of feel like what started as a discussion about, can we ask the developer to do this? And that, you know, I think initially it was like, well, we can ask and they'll, they can say no. And they said no, and we said, okay, then we have to, we still want to advocate for this to be done. You know, at some point. And now we're to the advocating for it to be done and it doesn't seem like it necessarily has to be tied just to J R one anymore.
Right, and, and I think we all agree with that. I, I don't think any of us, uh, at least on the planning commission disagree. If you do, I'd love to hear you say why, but, um. And I think that we, you know, the, the important thing for us at this point in time is we, we, we can't undo what's done. But we can certainly make sure what, going forward, that we address this and, and, and putting the onus on the city. To do what they frankly, planning commission and city council missed. Uh, prior to this period of time with this planning commission and, um. You know, it, just, just try to make right what we can. Certainly, uh, North Seventh Street is being as wide as. South Seventh Street, um, would be amongst that, that deal, but there are a whole lot of streets, uh, that are not, but. But I, I still would like to be informed by staff and, and anyone else that has the knowledge of it. Um, when the plats are all in and there is something we can do with the streets that are going in. And, um, and certainly, I guarantee that agricultural holding that we switched over to, uh. To residential, I guarantee that's the next big development that's going to happen.
So, and, and with, with properties such as that one, um, the difference between that and what we're discussing now is that. When and or if that comes in for development, that will be held to the current requirements.
Right.
Uh, and if it comes in after the code update and there's changes to the code, it would be, it would be held to whatever those new standards are. I, I think the, the, kind of the discussion is, is versus, you know, existing streets versus. What we're going to be seeing moving forward. Um, and it's with, you know, like Commissioner Terrell said. It's, it's really, the city has those standards in the code currently. It's just a matter of applying them. Whereas on some of the, the smaller, kind of older downtown streets that are, you know, built forever ago and haven't had any improvements. That's where it's a slightly different type of discussion with how are we going, you know, if, if you want to have some sort of, you know. Update to the T S P, for instance, that would identify specific bike routes, which I believe there, there are. In, I have so many transportation plans floating through my head, but I believe Carlton has, has that as well. Um, so it's, it's really a matter of just looking at that plan and that's kind of the guiding policy document. And then everything else comes down from, from that policy document as far as what the city can prioritize with funding and, and, you know, making those sorts of arrangements. And then development takes care of itself in an ideal world where the, the city enforces the, the codes and then the developers do the. You know, pay for those improvements.
I actually had, um, two comments. Um, so, um, so to Jennifer and Jim's point, both of them, um, one of the reasons we're focused on. This new development is because it's the newest development. And every time we do it poorly, every time we allow poor planning to go forward. We set a precedent for the next one to go poor, go badly as well. So Carlton Crest set a precedent for J R Meadows to go badly. Right, because there was no remediation there. And, um, it's too late to, um, make the developer fix it. But certainly, as a city, we have an obligation to put, put a stop to poor precedent. So there's that point. Um, the other thing is as new transport, as new developments come, I mean, um. Our system, our transportation plan has to be able to support new development, just like we have to have enough water. Just like we have to have enough, um, sewer capacity, we also have to have streets that can support new development. And there's a very strong argument if we have no, um, pedestrian or cycling infrastructure that our, our transportation system. Can't support new development. And so if the city does not get with it and start creating streets. That work for multimodal transportation for all users, not just for motorists. Then there's a very strong argument, I believe, for not, not approving new development until we get our act together. And we have transportation that supports new development. That's, that's another take on it and I, you know, I brought that up when we approved the last agricultural holding. I said, you know, I'm not sure if we have the transportation infrastructure that we need to support the, uh, development. So that may be a topic that comes up if nothing is done again.
I think we have fully skinned that specific cap. Uh, one thing I can tell you guys from a timing perspective is that. Um, between now and the recording of that plat, my signature will have to be on that before it's recorded. So, uh, at the risk of not having a, a vote on a motion this evening, I would just suggest that I will let everybody know. As soon as that, uh, plat is ready to be recorded and then at that point, we'd make a motion. I think the city council itself, uh, is, is aware of this issue. I know Mayor Watkins is here listening in. Um, it may not be unwise, even if the city council cannot, um, immediately bring this into their jurisdiction. Talk to, maybe go to the public comment, present just a few minutes, say, hey, this is coming down the pike. Uh, as a non-official action of the planning commission, we want to let you know that this is on our minds. We, we've made a decision that, you know, in, in consultation with, with city staff and city legal. Um, that the best course of action is to plan ahead and we just want to put this on your radar. Because as soon as this plat's recorded, we're going to have a formal action recommending to the city council, specific action on South Seventh. And thereafter, a broader, uh, view frame of all of our development planning. Uh, whether it be approvals or considerations into the future with an eye towards pedestrian and. Using the word of the hour, multimodal transportation. Um, but I think that that's the best way to leave this. I really do appreciate the clear and concise. Um, outline from, uh, both Kyle and Mr. Peaslee, or should I say, um, Kelsey Peaslee? But it's.
My wife's laptop.
Now, don't, don't you worry about it. I, I, I hope, uh, everybody has, uh, you know, is happy with the outcome here. I think this is the best of all circumstances and it puts us, as Suzie recognizes, we're all on the same page. That, um, you know, fundamental safety is, is a focus here. It's part of our, the role that we play. But, you know, part of the role we play is being in line with procedure and we have to be, we're not slaves of procedure, but we're sticklers for procedure. And we can only move forward. So Kyle's admonition that we focus on the future is, I think, very well taken. And, um, I think we know where we're going to go from here.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more. Thank you. Um, thanks, Kyle. Thanks, Nicholas. I really appreciate your work and, um, study in that.
Yeah, it's very much appreciated. For the rest of the evening, unless you guys want to talk about University of Arizona making it to the Sweet Sixteen. The only thing we really have outstanding is, um, unfortunately, Commissioner Robbins has provided us his resignation. He will not be joining us moving forward. Um, do we have to have a formal acknowledgement of that here on the record?
Yes, please.
And is it motion? Do we vote it? Um, I will, will accept a motion to accept his resignation. Um, I don't know what the legal ramifications of not accepting it are. So, um, if somebody will make the motion, uh, I will gladly at least abstain if not approved.
I'll make the motion that we accept Commissioner Robbins', uh, resignation.
I'll second.
All right, uh, hearing a motion and a second for the acceptance of Commissioner Robbins' resignation. All votes in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All four passes unanimously. We appreciate Mr. Robbins' service to our community and to the commission. And, uh, if anybody's out in Zoom land and you know somebody who is an interested citizen, we very much would appreciate. Not being on the, uh, the razor thin edge of quorum, uh, and having some more participation.
I have a.
With that said, we have, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Question, I'm assuming if, if, I mean, I don't, I don't know anybody, but I guess if I happen to be talking to anybody. Um, it goes, it goes to city council, right? City council officially appoints to planning commission, is that true?
Yes, so in the, the city's charter, section thirty five, vacancies in elected offices in the city shall be filled by a majority of the incumbent members of the council. Uh, the appointees term, I guess that's for their appointed position or elected positions. For the appointed positions in the city council, it's the same way that they got put in is the way that they would be filled in most cases.
That says we, we would not be sticklers for formality. So if you know anybody who's interested, whether or not they send snail mail, email. Uh, they can even get on TikTok and send us one. We'll make the connections, uh, to the, the appropriate parties of the city council. To make sure that their, uh, interest is, is acknowledged and appreciated.
Do you remember, do you remember that planning commission meeting where someone from J R Meadows said that they were super interested in being on the planning commission? Do you remember that? It was like before the meeting started. Was that meeting where the, the link didn't quite work?
I'm not sure.
I wish I knew who it was.
If the meetings are recorded.
Yeah, Marie's, Marie's on just about every month, so she might as well get a little bit of credit for joining us. Um, but we'll, we'll, um, do any other commissioners have any, um, comments they'd like to make for this evening? Otherwise, we can open the floor for a motion for adjournment.
Just to add the clarity, I, I found the section of the code that pertains to how it gets filled. So in the, for a border commission in this case. The mayor is the one that either can do a direct appointment or can make a recommendation to the city council. Uh, so it, it could go either direction. It's kind of at the whim of the mayor in that case. Uh, you can make suggestions to the mayor. Uh, but in the end, it is, it is the mayor's decision as to whether it's a direct appointment or whether it gets kind of kicked to city council for their decision.
Okay. All right, I'll, I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
I second.
I second, everybody's in favor. The vote turns into a wave, bye-bye. Everybody have a great month, stay healthy.